Questions or comments on that item? Thank you, Ms. Nettles. We'll move on to item 3.14, which is a presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding an ordinance repealing ordinance number 2020-4197 regarding face coverings for commercial entities. Let's see. Who? Dr. Nichols, I thought this one.
No, this one.
Your microphone, sir.
This one's presented by city manager, Mr. Capps. I just wanted to understand, as I read the summary, the city has really no recourse because the governor's change of order prohibits us from requiring masks, correct?
Yeah, so what we're doing is, you guys remember, we put an ordinance in place prior to the state doing anything several months back. And so after that, the state enacted their own mask ordinance. And so we adhered to that. Basically, there's language in there that basically says that we cannot do anything more stringent, and the state supersedes anything that we have. So now that the governor has issued the order that he did last week, or it started yesterday, this will enact us to go back and repeal our ordinance so that we don't supersede what the governor's doing. He has language in there. Brian's been working with it a little bit more. He can add some more details, but we've had our staff and both legal look at it as well.
Brian, did you want to add something?
Yeah, no, that's correct. Mr. Capps hit all the points on the head right there. Basically, there were pieces of previous orders that the governor had issued that either rescinded or superseded those previous orders. And that mayoral order that was adopted initially in the last summer is now in conflict with this order that is in effect. And most cities have taken this approach. One that's probably most public is the city of Austin and Travis County, and has decided to maintain their local ordinance. And as of a few hours ago, Ken Paxton, the attorney general for the state of Texas, has filed suit. I believe there's going to be a hearing tomorrow morning about that.
My only concern is, and I heard Kenny Lawson, one of the chairs, tri-chairs of the Operation Recovery, speaking to the whole issue of supporting businesses as they reopen. But I think all of the public health authorities still encourage people to wear masks. And we do have a number of our larger businesses in town that are retail businesses that are making it their policy to require masks if you go into their businesses. I'm going to vote to support this item, but I would like to have the council, I'd like to be at least in my own state part, state that I think probably we should be encouraging masks. I think the mayor has been making those statements. I think the council should say, yes, we're adopting this change according to what the governor has changed his order. But at the same time, we are strongly encouraging the support of those businesses that are requiring masks, and we're encouraging everyone to continue to wear them. I'd like to make it kind of a more public, positive statement about that, even though we're required to rescind our own mask ordinance in the context. So I don't know how we do that, other than maybe when we get to that, Mr. Mayor, you could make that statement on our behalf.
Yeah, earlier in the week, after this broke with the governor, I worked with Jay Solcal, and actually, we crafted a statement, and I think we can take that and we can repost that, maybe change a few of the words, but basically say that our council and the mayor have resolved that, you know, citizens should still wear masks as we had in the past. And even when a business gives you the option, we would still encourage our folks to continue to wear masks.
Good, I'd just like to see that publicized on our behalf. Thank you.
Right. Dr. Crompton? I'm seeing.
Mayor, I'd like to build on that a little bit. The governor's decision is egregiously irresponsible. It is totally out of line with all of the medical evidence. It is done to appease a political, make a political point. It is frankly, inhibits us totally from engaging in the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, which is our primary mission. I find this whole business about the criterion for going back to masks is 15% of hospitalization beds, as if that was any kind of comfort to the 15,000, 20,000 people who are suffering from this stuff who don't end up in hospital. It's a totally bizarre metric. It makes absolutely no sense. I'm so angry about this, and I feel so powerless about it, when it's such a wrong decision, and it's such a selfish decision. At the very time, we need our residents to be kind to each other and to engage in what we call selfless service, which is obviously a core value of this community. We're encouraging, we're not encouraging, the governor is encouraging, to people not to do that. And to argue that it's not a question of public policy, it's a question of personal privilege, is, in my view, quite absurd in the view of a pandemic. And so I've got a draft of a motion, and I'm going to vote for what we have to do tonight.
Right.
But under great protest. And so here, let me read it so I get it right. So I want to request the city council to direct the city manager and city attorney to place on the next city agenda on March 29, a resolution to be debated and acted upon by the city council, consistent with the intent of the following draft. And obviously, my wording needs improving, but you'll get the gist of the intent. And so what I'm trying to do, I'll read it to you. Whereas, College Station business owners are unable to rely on the support of local law enforcement agencies, nor do local law enforcement agencies have the authority to enforce a business owner's preferred requirement that customers wear masks in their place of business, other than through criminal trespass. And whereas this removes their ability to keep both themselves and their staffs healthy, and whereas there are no respected medical authorities who are supportive of removing the previous required face coverings requirement, and whereas the head of the Federal Centers for Diseases Control and Prevention Council, and I quote, this was yesterday, please hear me clearly, at this level of cases with variants spreading, we stand to completely lose the hard-earned ground we have gained. Now is not the time to relax the critical safeguards that we know can stop the spread of COVID-19 in our communities, not when we are so close, we have the ability to stop a potential fourth surge of cases in this country. Be it resolved, that the College Station City Council urges the governor of Texas and the judge of the Brazos County Commissioners Court, to the extent his authority permits, to urgently reinstate the requirement to wear face coverings over the nose and mouth in indoor public spaces and commercial businesses, along with the authority for local justifications to enforce this requirement. And I recognize that it's a draft, but it summarizes what I think is the sentiments of most of the people on this council, and I think the sentiments of our community.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Brick?
I would like to second Dr. Crompton's sentiments in this issue.
And we're not allowed to discuss it because it's not public for a discussion. What I'm asking simply is that the council request that it be put on a future agenda for discussion and action.
And when we get to that portion of our regular meeting, and we have future agenda items, you can do just that.
I was going to add that I see the governor's action is somewhat analogous to somewhat entering and running a marathon and quitting 100 yards before the end of the thing. It's just a purely political stunt that I think he's pulled, and I don't see any merit to it at all. And I certainly will support the notion that has just been expressed here.
Let's see, Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, I think that could be done on March 22nd, a little bit earlier. But I think what we have to do now is that this, when we approve this 3.14, is for the mayor to strongly point out that we would prefer to follow science and medical advisors rather than politicians, but our hands are tied, period. Just keep it simple so the message is right.
Yeah, I did mean March 22nd, the Monday meeting.
Oh, okay.
When we have that Monday meeting.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Okay, see none, then let's move on to the next item in our workshop. Okay, the next item is on our workshop agenda. We have a speaker protocol for our workshop. An individual who wishes to address the city council regarding any item on the agenda other than those items posted for executive session shall register with the city secretary two hours prior to the meeting being called to order. Individuals must register to speak or provide written comments at https://forms.cstx.gov/forms/cscouncil, or provide a name and phone number by calling 979-764-3500. Upon being called to speak, an individual must state their name and city of residence, including the state of residence if the city is located out of state. Speakers are encouraged to identify their College Station neighborhood or geographic location. Each speaker's remarks are limited to three minutes. Any speaker addressing the council through the use of a translator may speak for six minutes. At the three-minute mark, the city secretary will announce that the speaker must conclude their remarks. Item 5.1 is a presentation, discussion, and possible action on public input gathered on the proposed restricted occupancy overlay ordinance. Ms. Alyssa Halshram.
Evening, council. Alyssa Halishram, long-range planning administrator. Can you all see my screen okay?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, great. So tonight, I'll be presenting a summary of the public input we gathered regarding the potential restricted occupancy overlay, otherwise known as a RUU. This may commonly be known as the no more than two unrelated ordinance. For the audience listening in tonight, I just want to be clear, tonight's presentation is a workshop item for council's discussion. A final vote on the proposed RUU will not occur this evening. Okay. As you all know, the city council provided direction to city staff to research and draft an ordinance that restricts occupancy to no more than two unrelated persons. Council asked for this process to mirror the city's neighborhood conservation overlay and use the city of Bryan's residential neighborhood conservation zoning district as a base. The city staff drafted an ordinance and a draft handbook and presented that for feedback to both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council back in June of 2020. The majority of city council at that time was supportive of continuing to pursue the RUU, but requested that staff gather additional public input on a few key items that would be incorporated into the ordinance, specifically so that everyone impacted, and particularly the real estate and development community, neighborhood groups, and students could provide meaningful public input. Staff did begin that public input process back in August of 2020 with a seminar supper focused on our neighborhood groups. And from that discussion, there was substantial citizen concern raised about the definitions of "related" and how it affected the determination of a family. So essentially, who counts as a family and who would be subject to a RUU ordinance. In response to that citizen concern and city council direction, staff paused the RUU outreach process to take a step back and overhaul the definitions, specifically to address the previous restrictive nature of the definitions and modernize the ordinance in accordance with legal precedent. Those revised definitions were adopted in December of 2020, and specifically revised "family," and then removed the definition of "related." So with all that in place, we began a fresh round of public input in February of 2021. Okay, so we held three public input meetings and an online poll throughout February, and these were methods to collect public sentiments about the proposed RUU. I just want to note, they were not designed to be statistically significant surveying techniques, but instead were digital tools to collect and manage public input in virtual ways due to the ongoing pandemic, since we couldn't get meet face to face with large groups. The meetings and the online poll were open to anyone to participate. This was by design to allow for robust public participation in a multitude of different ways. We did tailor the meetings to a specific audience, as you see here on your screen, but they were open to all to participate, and many people did participate in one or more of those public input meetings. For the Zoom meetings specifically, we hosted, or excuse me, we had an end-of-meeting Zoom poll to ensure that we fully captured all of the discussion that happened throughout the meetings that were expressed either by folks on the microphone or through the Zoom Q&amp;A box. And I do want to note, just kind of in terms of the online poll, it was limited to one response per IP address, and this was specifically selected to prevent ballot stuffing while also allowing for anonymity. And the only way to really limit by one person or one household or one address would be to ask for more identifying information. So we specifically chose, you know, not to go that route, but limited one response per IP address. Once the online poll went live on February 9, staff received a weekly approximate update of number of participants, but no other information. After the poll closed on February 26, all of the poll inputs were shared with me at the PDS team on Monday, March 1. Okay, so we hosted a workshop with Planning and Zoning Commission last week on March 4. Again, it was a no-action item to get P&amp;D's feedback, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. We're obviously here tonight as a no-action item workshop for council's feedback. And then depending on what direction you all give this evening, if you would like to see the RUU ordinance move forward, then we're looking at bringing that back before this body, and PNC and council, in later March, early April for potential action. So that's, I just want to note for everyone listening, and that's the soonest that there could be a vote on the RUU. Okay, so I wanted to quickly mention how we got the word out about all of this to engage the public as best we could virtually. We did four direct emails, and these were to the RUU email list, which is still active, and anybody who's interested can sign up on the website to receive those. It's cstx.gov/ru, and there's a RUU email sign up. We ran information about the RUU in the neighborhood e-news in five different weeks. We did a longer blog post in early February to help get the word out about kind of exactly what the RUU is and advertise the three meetings. Our public communications team helped us get the word out on social media, on Facebook and Twitter, through multiple posts on both platforms. I personally did seven press interviews, and then we also hosted a press meeting where we invited the local media to come all at once and give them kind of a presentation about what RUU is and what was going to be talked about in those public meetings, and then address any questions that the local media writers and journalists had to help them kind of develop their different articles and segments. As of today, I got a count that there were 11 local news articles and segments about RUU since January. And then additionally, I also gave two presentations, one to the Texas A&amp;M Student Senate, and that is a portion of the Student Government Association, the SGA, which is undergraduate students. And then I also presented to the Texas A&amp;M Graduate and Professional Student Government, so the governing body for graduates and professional students. There was, I think, 70 participants in the first and 80 in the second, and those were kind of five to 10-minute presentations to encourage them to participate in the RUU public input process as well. And then as of today, I received approximately 40 email and phone contacts specifically about RUU. I have sent all of the email threads to you all yesterday and today, and I've kind of generally grouped those as, between emails and phone calls, I've received 18 general inquiries, 16 people expressing opposition to the RUU, six in support of the RUU. And then we also received a petition from a portion of the College Hills neighborhood expressing their support of the RUU. So you all should have all of that to consider. Okay, I want to pivot here and talk a little bit about what we did in the public input meetings themselves. So we essentially did a background, so talked about where the idea of RUU came from, kind of the journey that I just spoke about, about bringing forward a draft in June of 2020, going to that seminar supper in August, kind of putting everything on pause to address the definition of family. We then went more into what is the current definition of family, and included the graphic you see here on the right side of your screen, which compares our current city ordinance, which is citywide no more than four unrelated persons, and then the proposal under RUU, which would drop that down to no more than two unrelated persons. And we talked about kind of who counts as family members, how we group and count those things, and addressed specifically citizen questions on that topic. We also talked about standard zoning versus overlay zoning and the differences between the two. So as you know, the RUU is proposed as an overlay zoning, and so that would be a zoning district that essentially sits on top of the base or standard zoning district. And in this case, RUU could apply to all single-family zoning districts, or that was what was in the draft back in June of last year. And we also talked about what is an original subdivision, and so this would be who would be eligible to apply for a RUU. And an original subdivision is the original subdivision plat document. So whichever properties were originally platted together would need to work together if they wanted to pursue the RUU, and the property owners within that original subdivision would need to sign a petition in support of the RUU as well. And then we discussed the three key discussion points that council gave direction to get further input on. So, you know, general sentiment of people, were they, you know, generally in support of or generally opposed to the idea of a RUU? And then if RUU were to go into effect, what is the proper petition percentage and what is the appropriate legacy clause? And we'll talk more about all that in a moment. We paused at multiple points during each one of these meetings for kind of general Q&amp;A as well, and tried to address as many citizen concerns and questions that we could. And then we also did that through our online, or not online, Zoom Q&amp;A box as well. And then at the end of each meeting, like I mentioned previously, we did a poll just to make sure we captured all of the public input from each one of those. I do want to make note that after the first meeting on February 8, participants who were there with us that night identified that there wasn't an open-ended write-in option for the poll itself, and this was kind of an unseen limitation of the Zoom software that we didn't realize beforehand. So we did modify the kind of other please specify questions in the two subsequent public input meetings, so added the two most common open-ended responses from the petition percentage question, which were 75 and 100%, respectively, and actually made those multiple choice options to overcome that software limitation. Again, just want to note with the poll and all the polls in the meeting and the online poll, these were methods to collect public input and not designed to be statistically significant surveying techniques. And I'm going to talk more about all the input momentarily. This is a general breakdown of the number of participants that were in the different meetings and kind of the specific audience of each one. The February 8, we geared the presentation more toward the development, real estate, and investor communities, and had 114 participants. On February 22, it was geared more toward university students with 60 participants. February 23 was geared towards neighborhood groups and organizations with 118 participants. And then the online poll had over 3,000 participants, and that was open to the general public. Again, I do want to note, the public could participate in one or more meetings, and there were a handful of people who chose to do that, to participate in two or three meetings and the online poll. Again, these are just meant to be tools to collect public input. Okay, I'm going to pivot here to talking more about the actual three main discussion points at each of the meetings and what we heard. The first one is kind of general feelings about the proposed RUU. And then the second two are contingent upon, you know, if there was a proposed RUU, what is the required petition percentage needed to submit the rezoning request? And then the third question is regarding a legacy clause, and this is often known as grandfathering. So if a proposed RUU is adopted and approved in a subdivision that already has properties occupied by more than two unrelated persons, how should the city resolve that over occupancy issue? And really, the purpose of a legacy clause is to establish city protocol for how we handle properties that are occupied by more than two at a time that a RUU would be adopted in a specific subdivision. Okay, so here's the actual discussion question itself. This was the same question across the Zoom meetings and the online poll. And so people could select from, you know, do they feel strongly in support of, somewhat in support of, neutral, somewhat against, strongly against. We did have an unsure or prefer-not-to-say option, and then an other write-in option to collect general feelings and sentiments about the proposal. Okay, so getting more into the feedback that we heard, and for each of these, I'm going to talk about kind of generally those who were in support and generally those who were opposed. I'd say across the Zoom meetings, specifically to the development community and student groups, we did hear majority opposition to the idea of a proposed RUU. The exception being the neighborhood meeting, we did hear more support for the proposed RUU idea. And then also the online poll, we did hear majority strongly against the proposed RUU idea. So across all of those, people could self-select the categories that applied to them in terms of kind of their demographic breakdown. So the majority of folks who self-identified, or sorry, excuse me, the majority of folks in support of the RUU self-identified as either College Station homeowners or homeowners and associated with a neighborhood group. There is a wider variety of folks, of self-identified groups, who said that they were opposed, either somewhat opposed or strongly opposed to the RUU. And you can see the breakdown here of College Station homeowners, homeowners who are also in the development community, folks who are just in the development community and may live elsewhere, renters who are also graduate students, renters who are also undergraduate students, and then generally just graduate students, undergraduate students. And then I had to kind of group a bigger, a handful of people wrote in that they were former Aggies or their specific Aggie class, and then also a handful of student, or excuse me, of parents participated expressing concern on behalf of their Aggie who may be here So for discussion point one, concerns that we heard from both groups, those who were generally in support of the RUU tended to talk more about the perceived deterioration of established neighborhoods and wanting a tool to protect themselves at the neighborhood level to preserve the existing single-family character of their neighborhood. And they also expressed concern on the rent-by-the-room model of rental properties versus renting an entire house for a family, and that concern over the financial ramification for families, that the rent-by-the-room model specifically drives up the cost of rental properties and potentially prices out families. Those who were generally opposed to the RUU expressed concerns about private property rights and legality of a proposed RUU. And I do just want to note quickly that our legal team has reviewed the original draft proposal we had last summer and has been involved in all these discussions, and has kind of reviewed everything being proposed against the Fair Housing Act and case law as well. So we do feel comfortable with that. I want to note that, and if you have questions specifically legal, can talk more to that later. Another argument of the folks who were generally opposed to the RUU was about protecting existing investments, and here largely rental investments or investment properties that people own, and what happens if a RUU goes into effect in their neighborhood? Would they, you know, lose money essentially, or lose, you know, would their homes decrease in value because they're not able to rent to as many people? There were also a lot of discussion about the effectiveness of enforcement, and this is really, I think, related to the existing no more than four unrelated ordinance. And then, you know, dropping that down to make enforcement any more or less effective, so general questions there about enforcement of occupants restrictions as a whole. And then also concerns about financial ramifications and perceived equity issues with the RUU proposal. You know, would this adversely impact low-income families or family dynamics who, you know, may be different than how we define family today, or, you know, just have a different, maybe, different family dynamic? Okay. Moving on to discussion point number two, this one specifically was, kind of presumes, you know, a RUU-enabling ordinance is adopted. So what percentage of property owners do you think should be required to sign a petition to submit the overlay rezoning application? So this is the number of petition signatures a subdivision needs to submit the rezoning application. The options were 50% plus one, which is the same percentage as our neighborhood conservation overlay ordinance, 58%, which is the number, the threshold that the city of Bryan uses, 67%, which is a two-thirds majority, and then some other percentage. And this is where people could write in a different percentage that they were interested in seeing here. And I would note, the 58% from city of Bryan, I think anecdotally, they have said they picked that number because it was halfway between 50% plus one and 67, and that's how they arrived at 58. Okay. So those who were generally in support of the RUU, overwhelming majority selected 50% plus one as the appropriate petition percentage. The second and third choices, a very small margin between the second and third choices, but the second choice was 67%, and the third choice was 58%. But again, overwhelming majority said 50% plus one. For those who were opposed to the RUU, the, again, overwhelming majority of responses was 67% is the appropriate threshold. The second choice and third choice options were both write-in, and a lot of these write-in answers also had kind of open-ended responses in other parts of the RUU public input process that talked about being against RUU on principle. And And if they were against RUU on principle, then it should be 100% because it shouldn't be able to be enacted anywhere. So those things did correlate together for the write-in responses specifically. Okay, so for discussion point number two, the concerns we heard were those who were in support felt that it would be difficult to obtain a 58% or higher threshold that would really be limiting to the amount of neighborhoods that would be able to even potentially pursue a RUU. There were general sentiments about, you know, let's just stick with the NCO percentage, you know, seems to be working in that regard, why change it for this overlay? And also concern that subdivisions with significant numbers of rental properties would not be able to meet any higher than 50% plus one. Those who were generally opposed to the RUU, you know, stated again, private property right concerns that, you know, if it's just 50% plus one, that's not a very large majority to vote for something that would restrict individual properties. We heard comments about the percentage needs to overwhelmingly show support for the RUU. And then for those who, I think, had issue with the RUU on principle, they largely said that the percentage was irrelevant or wrote in 100%, saying kind of under no circumstances should the RUU go into effect. Okay, discussion point number three was specifically about the legacy clause. So if a proposed RUU is adopted and approved in a subdivision with properties that are already occupied by more than two unrelated persons, how should the city address that over occupancy? As you can see, there's multiple options. I'll walk through those quickly but not read all of it. So options were, it should not be resolved at all, homes should be able to continue with however many people they have occupied indefinitely, it should be resolved immediately upon approval of the RUU rezoning, it should be by land, which is if the property were to be subdivided or replatted and kind of configured in different ways, then it would need to come into compliance. The next option is by property owner, so when the property owner sells, when the property changes hands, the property would then need to come into compliance. Next option is by structure, so if the home is structurally altered in some way, that the property then needs to come into compliance. Next option is by demolition, so the, when the original structure is demolished, the new structure would, or new property, new structure and property would then have to come into compliance. And then the last option is specific to rental properties only, but by lease. So if it's a rental property, it needs to come into compliance at the end of the lease term. There were options to say unsure, prefer-not-to-say, or other, and kind of write-in here as well. So what we heard, for those who were majority, or generally in support of the RUU, the majority response was by lease term, so that properties, specifically rental properties, would need come into compliance at the end of their lease terms. Again, strong majority for that response. The second and third choices, you know, much less selected, but second choice was by property owner, and third choice is to resolve it immediately upon the RUU rezoning. Those who were generally opposed to the RUU, strong majority here said it should not be resolved, that it should be allowed to consist kind of in perpetuity. And then, again, not a lot of folks selected these two, but second and third choices were by lease and by property owner. General concerns we heard from both groups, and this is, I think, an interesting category because there's a lot of overlap. Those in support of the RUU recognize the need for an appropriate legacy clause, as do those who are opposed to the RUU. So, you know, the specifics of that legacy clause are to be determined, of course, but I think both groups do recognize that there needs to be some type of legacy clause, grandfathering to protect existing investments. Those who were generally in support did note with this question specifically and in this discussion point that, you know, if properties are allowed to continue in perpetuity, if they're not resolved at some point, that the subdivision itself does still transition. So that may not get at that neighborhood integrity piece that some who are in favor of RUU are interested in. And then again, those who are generally opposed to RUU express concerns here about private property rights and expectations of their existing investments and kind of all, everything related to those arguments. Okay, just a reminder now, on timeline, this did go to our Planning and Zoning Commission last week for our workshop. I think similarly to the public input process, the commissioners themselves were very mixed on their responses to all of this public input and their personal thoughts on RUU. You know, I think some were for, some were against. There were folks, of those PNC commissioners who were in support, they expressed concerns for neighborhood integrity, protecting families, and accelerated gentrification rates in certain areas of the city. Those who were opposed to the RUU, to the proposed RUU, expressed concern for lower-income groups, non-traditional families, and enforcement issues with, again, the four unrelated existing and potentially the two unrelated occupancy restriction enforcement issues, and then also artificially suppressing market demand. PNC was also split on the appropriate percentage. You know, we heard numbers from those generally in support, more of the 50% plus one, and those who were generally opposed, more of 58% plus, you know, potentially an even higher number than that. I think both PNC members who were for and against, both, or both groups expressed interest in a strong legacy clause, again, I think recognizing that existing properties do need to be grandfathered in some significant way. Okay, so I know that was a lot to digest, and I'm happy to answer questions on everything. We are looking for a direction on kind of three key pieces tonight, and you all have a document in front of you that lists out everything I just spoke about with the percentages and the different options of the legacy clause. So we would like direction on kind of how would council like us to proceed with the RUU? Would you like us to bring back a RUU ordinance, you know, as soon as possible or some other direction? And then if you would like to see the RUU ordinance back, what are the group's thoughts on appropriate petition percentage and appropriate legacy clause? And with that, I will stop and ask for...
Okay. Counsel, would you care to hear first from our speakers?
Yes.
This evening, all right, before we start to ask questions then? All right. We do have a lengthy list. Thank you, Ms. Halishram. That was very, very well done. We do have a lengthy list, and we're going to begin with three individuals who are each representing a group, and so they will be speaking for up to 10 minutes apiece. And I do know that some of these folks who are speaking do have PowerPoints, and particularly with the groups that were going, those representing a group, since they have 10 minutes, Ian is going to keep time, and when they get to three minutes remaining, he's going to indicate that. When they get to one minute remaining, he will indicate that, and also when they get to 30 seconds remaining, so that they can be wrapping it up without being interrupted. Okay? Our first speaker is Mr. Jeremy Leatherwood. He is representing Stephanie Leatherwood, Rachel Ellis, Dulce Terrelli, Brandon Cerny, and Amanda Matthews. Mr. Leatherwood, are you with us, sir?
Yes, sir, I sure am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir, we can, thank you.
Fantastic. My name is actually Jeff Leatherwood. My wife and I are raising our, can I, I'll just go ahead and start. My name is Jeff Leatherwood. My wife and I are raising our family here in College Station. My seven-year-old daughter and nine-year-old son go to College Station public schools. We are College Station homeowners at 4618 Midsummer Lane. We also own multiple rental properties here in College Station, including 18 that were involuntary annexed into the city. I'm still not really over that, but that's for another time. I'm also the president of the local MLS with over 1,200 members, and I own and manage a large property management company representing over 600 College Station property owners. I am a landlord. I'm actively involved in the development of new communities here in College Station as well. I've said most of this stuff before, but I'll say everything I can remember here again today. It's disappointing and frustrating that I have to do this again, mostly because you guys appear to be continuing to try to move forward with this despite continuous and unwavering feedback from the community that they do not support this. You guys have received repeated feedback that overwhelmingly concludes the people of College Station do not want this. These are the people you were elected to represent. I'm included in this group, as are the 600-plus property owners I represent and the local MLS of 1,200 members I'm also here today representing. The people from College Station Association of Neighborhoods who donated to several of your campaigns and got you guys elected are not good people looking out for the best interests of College Station. These are people with aspirations of taking away rights from neighbors to appease their selfish and short-shighted agenda. I have continually and repeatedly seen deliberate misrepresentations and opinions of members of College Station Association of Neighborhoods represented as facts, and even encouraged from these people to look at the facts. Just to be clear, despite repeated attempts to represent it as such, Mr. DePriest showing a map of College Station and labeling areas he thinks or presumes can or can't vote a certain way is not fact-based data. It's also literally redlining your target demographics to specific areas, which is both unethical and illegal, and for good reason. By the way, I personally don't take a lot of comfort in the lobbyists pushing for occupancy restrictions, telling me and all of you essentially, don't worry about...